Dude, Dave's leaving for like two weeks and then two weeks again.
All right, this meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Erin O'Quinn is running late. Thank you.
And is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Krishna, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures, Commissioner Winchester.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strike?
Uh, yes, in the, is this where we disclose on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I was not present for the three cases that will be presented under the consent agenda, so I will not be voting. And in the matter of case 2020-0012, I'll make the same disclosure I did previously when it first came before the commission, in that I do know two of the principals associated with the, into the Girdwood Brewing Company, but have no, or just, I just know who they are and personally know them.
All right, I think unless there's objection, you would be permitted to proceed. For my own disclosures, I will say that I was not present when the matters of the consent agenda were addressed, so I will be abstaining from those. Also, I'll do something similar to Commissioner Strike in the matter of case 2020-0012. Last time, I disclosed that I do have an income property that is within a mile of the business. Same thing, it is not any special or particular interest outside of that. And last time I was moved to proceed. Is there a motion for me to participate? Or? Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Looney. Any objection? Seeing no objection, I will be participating as well. Commissioner Looney, do you have any disclosures?
Uh, yes, actually, it looks like that's a pretty popular case, but in the same case, 2020-0012, one of the owners is the brother of one of our employees, so I will abstain from that project, or from that case.
Okay. Commissioner Spinelli, oh, nevermind, sorry, Commissioner Spinelli.
Yeah, in the matter of case 2019-0160, I will, I was recused from the, this case. Will not participate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Krishna? No disclosures. And Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, for the consent agenda items, I'll abstain from voting. I wasn't at the meeting that they were discussed.
All right, and that covers disclosures. Moving on to item C2, the annual election of officers. Is there a motion to nominate an officer for chair? Motion by Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Strike, who would you like to nominate for chair?
I think you've been doing a great job, and I would nominate that Danielle continue in that current vice chair, or for chair? Chair. I didn't know if you switched me on there. For chair, I would nominate to put you back, have you retain that position.
Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Is there anyone else that would like to make a nomination for chair? All right, seeing no other nomination, vote? Oh.
That seems like good news for that.
Yeah. All right. I would say I've just elected myself. No, moving on to vice chair, is there a nominee, someone that wishes to make a nomination for vice chair? Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yeah, I've enjoyed being vice chair for a while, but I'd like to nominate Commissioner Gardner for that role, if he accepts.
Seconded by Commissioner Strike. Any objection down there? I see no
Good job.
verbal objection. Is there anyone else that would like to make a nomination for vice chair? Seeing no other nominations, we'll move forward with the voting on Commissioner Gardner for vice chair. And that also passes. Oh, Commissioner Strike?
Yes, in regards to Commissioner Looney, I want to thank you for your time on there. I think you did a great job. You're going to be back, only because you pulled yourself this time, but I want to thank you for the time you spent in this role, in this function.
Well, appreciated. Actually, I will give credit to Lori, and she was able to prepare me sometimes with a cheat sheet, which makes it much easier, that's right.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Yeah, I would like to second that. I think, Commissioner Looney, you've done a really good job, and, yeah, it makes it nice when I'm gone, that I know you'll do a better job than I could have done had I been here.
I'm glad you're back.
Since, to proceed with the consent agenda, the first item on our public hearing, we're going to need Commissioner O'Quinn. What I'm going to do is I'm going to call for a brief recess until he gets here. We've been told he should be, now I'm guessing, within about five minutes, so should be a short recess, but we should be back soon. Yeah, I think that's fine, Lori, is that fine? Before people run away, I'm going to call us back in, and it looks like we have an update. Is there a motion to arrange the calendar order? A motion by Commissioner Looney?
Yes, I propose that we change the order of the agenda tonight and move the public hearing, item G1, up in front of item E1.
And also, just as a clarification, so it would go G1, then to D1, and then E1? Oh? So, I may, just before that motion goes to fruition, Commissioner Looney, would you like to withdraw that now that we have Commissioner O'Quinn here?
Oh, that's perfect. Okay, yes, just forget I said anything, like normal.
Yeah. Then, as a housekeeping matter, Commissioner O'Quinn, welcome, sorry about your car battery. Do you have any disclosures today? Just to make you jump right into it.
No disclosures.
No disclosures?
Okay, so other than the consent agenda, I, how are we supposed to do this? For the South Central Foundation item?
Oh, if you have any items in which you're going to recuse yourself from on the regular agenda, now would be the time to address it as well.
Not from the regular agenda, just the consent agenda, the South Central Foundation item.
What case was that?
Resolution 2020-05, case number 2020-0014, the PLI to B3. I recused myself last meeting from voting on that issue, so I won't be consenting to that.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, now that we have all the disclosures, and we have done election of officers, we can move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner Looney, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Any objections? Seeing no objections, we will move ahead and vote. I'll just remind people that unless you're abstaining from all of the consent agenda items, you should vote in favor if that's what you're going to do. You don't have to abstain if you're only abstaining from one or two of the items. And I believe that motion passes. All right, moving on to unfinished business, case 2019-0160. Commissioner Spinelli is already ahead of the game. We will send someone to get you when it is, this item has been heard. And now that Commissioner Spinelli has left the room, as an update for this, on this item, the public hearing matter has been closed. It went back to, the planning commission requested that this matter go back to staff for, to answer a few additional comments. With that in mind, staff, would you like to give us an update on where we are with this matter?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, we sent out a memorandum, and I'll go back in history here a little bit. On January 6, 2019, the commission held a public hearing on case 2019-160. After taking public testimony, the commission noted that the public hearing is closed, and made a motion to postpone a decision on the case until amendments were brought back to the commission for review. The commission requested some specific, that staff address a few questions and criteria, and that was provided to the commissioners in this memorandum. Some of those are, there was a question there regarding denial would unreasonably discriminate against amongst providers of functionally equivalent services, or prohibit, the effect of prohibiting the provisions of personal wireless service. Another question was, is this project viewed as a new conditional use and the associated standards that apply? There were seven questions total. Another question was, basically, if there was a de facto conditional use, what approval criteria would be changing, and what legal nonconformities being increased? There's, is a conditional use for a tower dependent on tenants, or the type of equipment, or just the tower itself? Does the work that the applicant is proposing rather consider maintenance or repair, increase their legal nonconformities? That was addressed. There's a question, there was a sixth question, is it more appropriate to consider this a modification to a tower conditional use, or a new tower conditional use? That was answered by staff as well. Also, the last question was question seven, if there is an approved criteria or legal nonconformity is changing, should be, we be evaluating these specific items? That was, that was answered as well. And the last, last item that was brought forth is a diagram of the tower wrap detail, and that was asked by the commission. We can see that the original tower is 24 inches in sort of a triangle configuration, and the new triangle configuration will be 60 inches on each face. The petitioners here with more question, or, he's, he's able to answer any questions as well, and may refer to him on a few questions if you guys have, but we're both here to kind of answer any questions.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, I didn't quite hear. You said the original tower was 24 inches?
Uh, yes, each face is 24 inches according to the diagram.
And the new one?
Is going to be 60 inches on each face.
Six, zero?
Six, zero, yeah.
Will the original, any aspect of the original tower remain?
The, Gary, the original tower will remain. The guy wires, however, and I've noted it in there, they're going to be, they're going to be significantly reducing the amount of guy wires they have. Let me just briefly see if I can find that, but they had basically like three guy wires for each section coming out, I think a total of nine, and now they're only going to have three guy wires total, so it's going to be reducing the visual kind of clutter. That we'll see.
Does, does the original still provide the support, or does the new wrap tower, side of the tower, is that the structural?
The new, the new tower is going to be the structural, that's bolted to the old tower to hold it up, and the equipment on there. However, Gary's raising his finger, let's, let's refer to him.
Please approach.
Hi, Gary Brecky, representing Vertical Bridge. Just a clarification, guy wire numbers remain the same. It's the guy anchors that are reduced, so from nine guy anchors to three guy anchors. So, there's the same number of guy wires supporting the new tower. They're just anchored together at one point, so there are three points for those guy wires to collect.
And then, Gary, the question was, is the tower, the old tower going to be supporting? Is the equipment going to be on it? How's that going to work?
There won't be any equipment on it, but the old tower will remain, and does get attached to the tower wrap at certain sections. So, at some point, the owner could remove the old tower, but that is not the plan. The plan is to do the wrap with the existing tower remaining.
Okay, so the current tower could be removed after the new tower has been installed?
It could be, yes.
So, it's not providing any structural support at that point?
No.
So, this isn't in fact a new tower?
Yes, I think that's how it's being treated.
And, and that's the problem I'm having, and that's part of the, part of what I'm trying to bridge between a conditional use, or a change to an existing tower versus a new tower. God, I wish you'd told me that it was going to be connected. I wish it was part of the support.
Well, it's, it's possible that they could run coax cable on the existing tower. You know, I mean, as far as I know, the plan is that the existing tower will remain inside the new wrap.
But it provides no structural, it provides no?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I think you touched on this originally, whenever we first heard this case in January, and I apologize if my question kind of repeats some of what you mentioned, but I was reminded, looking at some of the comments in this updated information we received from the staff, that there's a reference that says, "As far as Vertical Bridge and their clients on this tower know, there are no alternative site locations within the immediate area that can accommodate their network equipment." And I, I think last time you spoke about the other tower that was on the site, and what, what steps may have been taken to evaluate whether that might be suitable. And I don't remember exactly what you said, and I'm just curious generally, this says, "As far as you know," but what steps have been taken to evaluate whether other towers might be suitable to use the equipment that would be on this tower?
Well, the existing tower that is on this property and north of the subject tower is a broadcast tower, and it's a hot tower, meaning that it has both AM and FM on it, and the tower itself is a radiating element. So, to try to locate any wireless communications on it would be problematic at best. And anytime, I mean, it, it can happen, but it has to be engineered, and, and the one thing that you have to remember is this tower, that tower is just as old as the existing tower, and so its condition is questionable for adding anything to it. It may need to be modified in the same way, or replaced. But because it's a hot tower, is, that's really the limiting factor of it. It's just problematic to work on. You have to shut power down to the broadcast stations in order to get anybody on the tower, and that's disruptive.
So, the, the challenge is with the existing tower has to do with the process of installing?
Well, just, you know, just the fact that it's a, the, the tower itself is a radiating element.
Right.
So, if, as an example, if you were to walk up and touch it, you would be zapped, for lack of a better term.
Right.
And potentially killed because of the power involved.
And so that limitation means that you would have to, you'd have to shut it down?
Shut down, yeah, it would be problematic.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yes, this question is probably more for staff, and it's, looking at the supplementary information you provided, I appreciate that, but, and I, I had a hard time really wrapping my head around the whole concept about whether this, this should be considered a new tower, but I end up just kind of highlighting in, in this seven-page thing, places, but there's quite a few places where it says, "This tower is subject to new tower standards," and it says
Through the, through the, Commissioner Looney, you are correct.
Okay.
The tower and the guy wires are, are, it's a new tower.
New tower.
And that's how we're reviewing it. However, as Dave Whitfield said, prayer, there is certain elements of the property that have nonconforming rights.
That's true.
Yeah, such as, you know, surrounding fence, vegetation, things like that, parking, landscaping. But the tower itself and the guy wires, the, are new stuff, and we're reviewing those as a new.
And that's why I'm having a hard time, I guess, just looking at the, I realize that the height is issue and offset, but the allowable height, that's, you know, the 65 foot.
Right.
This, this thing is 283 feet compared to the allowable 65, so it's nowhere near the allowable, and it's, it's hard to overlook that.
Yeah, you, you do have to remember this is R2M, and that's the height allowed in the R2M, so there is, this is kind of where we're in, where we, I kind of refer back to, you know, the grandfather rights, they're, what, antenna farm would be a little bit different height, this is R2, and that's why it's 65. There's an existing tower, two existing towers there that are that height.
Mm-hmm.
But you are correct, in essence, it is a new tower.
Okay. And a new tower in the R2M zoning could only be 65 feet?
Correct.
And, and I guess that's my point, is really that if this really is a new tower, new structures happen to be going, just can be wrapped around this existing structure, if a new tower could only be 65 feet in this area?
For the zoning code, yes.
For the zoning code, okay.
I have a question for staff, based on the questions from the commission at our last meeting. Are you still recommending the same department recommendations on page 10 and 11 of the original staff report, or were there any changes that you think would be appropriate?
Uh, no, we're still recommending page 10 and 11. There was one through four, however, if we remember back, we added a fifth condition?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as we have, address that. But yes, the department's still recommending those five conditions.
And then, if you could just humor me for a thought experiment for a second. Let's say that we have, back in the day, this wasn't a, a tower that got a conditional use permit, but it was a building for a gas station. All right, so it went through the conditional use permit, a gas station is now allowed. Now they want to put in an additional pump at the gas station, but the original conditional use permit just said four pumps, but now they want five pumps. What if they want to tear down that entire gas station and build a five-pump gas station? What would be the process that some would go through?
If it was, had to go through a conditional use, then we would be similar to this, we'd go through the conditional use. There would be certain nonconforming aspects, such as like their parking required, and, and, you know, bay, landscaping, fencing, things like that. However, the new building, or just the new pump addition, would, would be a conditional use. However, that has existed as a gas station forever.
So, it really wouldn't matter that a new gas station was coming in? It would just be that we're changing it from a five-pump to a four-pump, and there's an added bonus that this gas station is going to be better because it's being built to new gas station standards?
Per se, if it was structurally compromised, yes.
Okay. I think that helps me see this less as a new antenna, and more as a, we are updating the conditional use that was previously in place. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
A question along the same track as Commissioner Bailey had. I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to get my hands around when grandfather rights are extinguished. So, if you have a building that's 50 years old and not quote "code compliant," but it's grandfathered into the code, I mean, you don't have to change, you don't have to make any changes, and that building's destroyed, when the property owner goes to replace that building, zoning approved, they have to bring it up to code. They're no longer grandfathered. Is that correct?
There's a few factors, but basically, they would have to bring some things into compliance, yes.
They're going to have to follow all the regs and rules for that particular piece of land now. They're going to come under height restrictions, they're going to come under fire suppression if required, and all the different code requirements for parking that they didn't necessarily had before because they were grandfathered.
Yeah, if it was a, just a permitted use, yes, there's no conditional use or anything then involved. However, they could get a variance.
Pardon?
They could get a variance, let's say. So, if they just had a permitted use to build a new building, and it wasn't the same height, they would have to get a variance, or if it was a conditional use before, they'd have to come back before for the conditional use for the height.
But there are certain elements that you're not going to get a variance on. You're not going to get a variance for parking.
Correct. Well, they could, but
Or slight safety issues.
Yes, yes.
So, back to the question on this piece, this tower is grandfathered for its current use.
Correct.
We want to remove this tower and put a new tower in. Its usage will be somewhat different than the original intended use, because technology has changed, and we're going to adapt this tower to suffice for new technology, technological uses. But my problem coming to grips with is the height and the rest of the requirements. I have no problem the tower staying there grandfathered, but once we start making major changes to this tower, it's no longer grandfathered.
Well, that's why we're here, is, we are saying it is a new tower.
Well, we, no, we haven't always said it was a new tower. When we first had this come before us, it was, we played with the words, "It was wrapped, it was changed, it was," they, you know, we did everything but say it was a new tower. Now we've, now we're all using the term
Yeah, the department, now the department's defined it as, as a new tower.
Pardon?
The department has defined it now as a, a new tower.
Now.
For that height, yeah, we've clarified it.
And as a new tower, we're asking now for, as a new tower, has this gone before the public?
They, they had a community meeting.
Yeah, we had a community council meeting, and
Have we had a public hearing meeting on that topic?
Pardon me?
Have we had a public hearing meeting on a new tower?
Well, the January 6 meeting qualified as the public hearing.
It qualified as a public hearing, but not for the same stated purpose?
Well, the planning department feels like, or is in the position that we've clarified it, but it was under the same tower regulation.
Might the residents that surround this area have not been engaged before, just speculating, because this was a grandfathered use in their view because of how it was presented? But now, have they been told it's a new tower?
I believe, I believe the original meeting was told it was going to be a new 283-foot tower wrapped around the old one. That's how it was, that's, that's how it was portrayed and advertised.
Yeah, community council meeting, and then public mailers sent out 1,700-some residents. I think the muni notified, I don't know, 1,200-some residents.
But up until now, this is now a new tower. All the verbiage before, this was not a new tower.
No, I don't think it's ever been portrayed as a modification, although the, the drawings in Vertical Bridge, and their drawings call it a modification. It's never, I don't think publicly been stated as a modification. This has been treated from the time I first met with the muni last year on how to go forward with this application as a CUP, as a, they were going to treat it as a new tower.
And that's where I'm, got a concern that maybe this isn't the right process. This is a new tower.
But isn't this the process a new tower would go through?
Pardon me?
Isn't this the process a new tower would go through?
Well, I think that we'd have a lot more information regarding the new requirements for a new tower. If this were a brand-new request, would the same, would we have modified or changed any part of this process?
No, the original staff packet, I believe, answers all the new tower questions that we would have.
We didn't start using the term "new tower" until the last couple of weeks and today. We did not use the term "new tower" at the last public hearing.
Well, I think that we did discuss that, as I recall.
Well, we discussed that it should be a new tower. We thought that the verbiage that was being used was incorrect, and that was one of the questions that was put forth to the staff.
We, we discussed, you know, we discussed both. We discussed that it's a new tower. I mean, even Mr. Whitfield put it out that, yes, it's a new 283-foot tower. However, there's certain nonconforming issues. We, you have to look at the fact that there's nonconforming issues with the other aspects of the site.
I'm, I'm just concerned that through all this gyration of terminology, that we've lost some of the public input as a result. I'll back off.
Plan, plan staff doesn't believe there has been.
Just as a clarification, I am not finding it right now, but I believe there was comments in our staff packet regarding its presentation to the community council. Do you know where that is in our staff packet?
I can take a look real quick.
Thank you. And while we're doing that, not to double-team you with staff, but Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, I'll try and go through them quickly. First, when the chair asked about the conditions of approval on page 11, was the fifth one that you referenced, that was the approval of the variance as a condition?
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, just to make sure I'm on kind of fully understanding, what are the potential points of dispute here in terms of the approval criteria that were included in the original staff packet? I think, by my notes, I think the ones that are, that are not met or won't be met by the condition, by the conditions of approval are the minimum separation distance, which would be, I guess that would be a condition of approval, would have that variance in place, and then also the the setback the setbacks, where there's the discussion of the guy wires, and that wouldn't be technically met, but the recommendation from the staff is that, you know, we could approve the conditional use notwithstanding that, is that right?
That is correct.
And then also, the tower height.
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, and then I also wanted to ask, just about the standards that we're looking at here, so my read of the additional comments from the staff is that the staff is not recommending, or, yeah, I guess recommending, that we would need to make sure that the approval criteria in twenty-one oh five oh four oh K six are satisfied, is that understanding correct? And that's referenced in, or I guess incorporated through K three G.
That is, yes, you are correct.
Okay, and then can you explain to me why, why that is, that you don't think that we need to confirm that those criteria are also met?
Let me take a look here, under the old staff report here. So I believe the Abaluc Community Council is one fourteen and one fifteen in the staff packet, and then to answer your question, Mr. Gardner, let me take a look at my codebook.
Sure, and the language in the updated material that I'm looking at, if it's helpful, is page five and six, the last bullet on page five, where it says, "Planning does not think the commission needs to address what I think is the standards in case six," but that it provided information on those points.
Oh, we did, question two does provide the answers to those, it has A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and H, and it goes on, H one, H two.
Right, but, but I guess I'm trying to figure out if we need to actually conclude that those criteria are satisfied, or if not, and if not, why this, why staff thinks that we don't need to.
Oh, yeah, I believe the commission should find if those standards are met.
Okay, and just to make sure, we're talking about the same thing, I'm talking about the standards in twenty-one oh five oh four oh K six, the approval criteria listed there?
That is correct, so those questions were answered, we added that, because you had, I believe you, thinking back now, I believe you had brought it before that, so we went ahead and answered them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And then the final, the final question.
Took me a second to figure that out, but yeah, we had answered those because you had asked for those.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the final question I had was, I'm looking at three G, where it says that to approve the application, we have to find that denial would unreasonably discriminate among providers, and I'm wondering if that's a typo and misstated, because I'm, the response you gave with respect to that discrimination section was that it was incorporated, I guess, through whatever the relevant federal statute here would be, but basically, the gist of it was that we can't do anything that would in fact discriminate, and I seen, I read this as suggesting that we can't approve it unless we conclude that denying it would discriminate, but I think we, I would think that it's set up to say that we can approve it so long as approving doesn't discriminate, if that makes sense to anybody in this room. Because by my reading of the exact language of that three G, I think we have to make a finding that denying it would discriminate in order to approve it, but I don't think that's what the intent of it is.
No, the intent, I believe, is more, you know, you cannot discriminate amongst the providers, like, you didn't like one seller company, you couldn't deny their cell tower based upon that, this is at a federal level, that they can't.
So maybe the word denial should just be, was intended to be approval in G, so that to approve it, we have to make a finding that, I don't know, yeah, I don't know, that, anyway, that's confusing to me, but I'll leave that for the moment.
If I can win, I think the finding is, if we were to deny, the denial cannot be based on...
Discrimination.
Discrimination.
You're correct, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I believe Commissioner Gardner is out of the queue, I'm going to chime back in. Thank you for finding that on page one fourteen, I would just like to point out that it does say that there was a handout available to the attendees, that they had visual example of what was being spoken about, there was only one question about the proposed project, and that was from John Welton, about one of the pictures provided in the handout, otherwise there were no other questions or concerns. I think this alleviates my concern that the community council or the public may have been presented something that was not accurate, it appears that they were presented actual pictures of what was going to happen, and so I don't think we have to worry about additional public notifications being sent out, I think the public was notified, and while the semantics is confusing, it doesn't conflate the main issue, which is the physicality of what's happening to the location, so I don't have any concerns about any notice requirements not being fulfilled, I believe notice was fulfilled in this case. Commissioner Looney.
Yeah, so I guess I'm going back to just the gist of really what, what's the difference between what the, a new tower would be required and what this is, but essentially, of course, I've already talked about the height, you know, where a new tower could be sixty-five feet, and this is currently two-hundred-and-eighty-three feet, and that's just one thing, but the thing that's more disconcerting to me is what could be potentially, is a life safety issue, so typically, the code requires the separation distance from the base of the tower to be twice the height of the tower, I'm just, think of all the events, some big monster windstorm that may blow part of the tower over into a adjoining property, they want it to be twice as far as the height of the tower, but if I get the numbers correct, it appears that the actual separation from the base of the tower to the nearest protected property is one-hundred-and-eighty feet, the tower height is two-hundred-and-eighty-three feet, so if this tower were just to fall over, not even to get blown over, but just fall over with no vertical, horizontal movement, there is a life safety issue of this huge tower on this property with such a small separation distance. If you were to follow the code, it would require a separation distance of five-hundred-and-sixty-six feet from the base of the tower to a protected property, so essentially, we're, yeah, we're like a fifth of that, a fourth of that, so this is, it's more than just aesthetics, I think it's to the point where we should be concerned about that.
Commissioner Winchester?
To staff, I just wanted to ask, say there was a big earthquake or something, and this tower catastrophically failed, and they applied to rebuild it, what would that process look like, and would it be much different than what we have in front of us?
Through the chair, Mr. Winchester, it would be the same, it would be here today under the same case for conditional use for height.
Commissioner Strike.
Question to the staff, this tower as currently proposed, this new tower, as currently proposed at two-hundred-and-eighty-three feet, I don't know the exact language of the federal statute that allows a petitioner of a tower to exceed that height by either ten or fifteen percent without having to come before the city or this commission, if they so choose to increase the height, so at ten percent, under the federal statute as I understand it, we could approve a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-foot tower, but theoretically, the owner could build a three-hundred-and-eleven-foot tower. That's at ten percent, and at fifteen percent is three-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. Is that correct?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, you know, that's that same three thirty-two C seven that they have, they do come into the land use, but I'm not familiar with that, it does say fifteen, up to fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet or percent?
I believe it's up to fifteen feet.
I think it's percent of the original tower.
Yeah, that, I don't know.
And it's not, you don't think it's much when you're dealing with a sixty, sixty-five-foot tower and it goes to eighty-five feet, but when you're talking about a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-foot tower, and now you're over three-hundred feet.
Excuse me, but I was under the impression the code was fifteen-foot extension increments twice in most zoning districts.
Not code, it's a federal statute.
Okay, but I know the municipal code, I think, allows for extensions.
In fact, the federal statute precludes the city from enforcing that, and you're, as an owner, you can increase that height according to the federal statute, and the city can't do anything, is my understanding, they don't even interject.
Well, if that were the case, I guess we would have been doing that all along, we never did.
Which is why, which is why in some of the cases for towers, that people have asked for eighty-foot, five-foot towers and so forth, we've actually approved them at a lower amount, so they could go up to eighty-five, but we didn't see them go over a hundred.
I think in this case, you'd still be up against dimensional variance, you know.
We're up a different code, we got the municipality code and rules and regs, and we got a federal law over here that gives you more power. I'm just wanting, I want to make sure we're not heading into unintended consequences here.
I just would say, maybe more to Mr. Looney, it's kind of, it's just kind of a gray area, you know, I mean, new tower, but it's being built around an existing tower in the same place, so we've treated it, and I've gone through the process as if it's a new tower, but in my mind, when you talk about a new tower, you're talking about something that never existed before, so you've got something that exists there now, and the community has grown up around it, and yes, there's a remote danger because of it, but these towers have been there before zoning existed, those communities were built well after that, so, I mean, I understand the concern, it's, you know, I don't take it lightly by any stretch, that's why we would be going in for the variance as well on this, so it's kind of a gray area, I mean, when I think of a new tower, I think of building a tower where none existed before, this is being built around an existing tower, and the community has come to accept it as part of the landscape, I think that's why we've had such little public input, I mean, really zero, so, and that's surprising to me, and I've been in this business a long time, but this thing generated nothing, even from the residents that live in the surrounding neighborhoods, which were targeted by the mailers and the community council meeting, so...
Just to that, so we're touching base, what is the tower height currently?
Pardon me?
What is the tower height currently?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-three feet.
And what's the tower height you're recommending?
Two-hundred-and-eighty-three feet.
So we're not changing any of those requirements with this new wrap?
No.
All right, and so, again, it's...
I know, it's a kind of a weird gray matter thing, I don't know, it's a...
Question for staff, so when we're looking at the approval criteria that we have before us, would there be different approval criteria if it was a new tower versus a wrap?
No.
So the criteria that was outlined by staff, briefed by staff, same either way?
Same.
Correct, so, and then also, the notification given to the public, same?
Yep, correct.
And our job to review would be the same?
That's correct.
And currently, we wouldn't be able to tell them, "Take down your current height and reduce it," we have no power to do that with an existing structure that we've already approved, correct?
Correct.
So it's really just, can they make this a stronger tower that'll have less impact on the community?
Yes, you're correct.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Quinn.
So just looking at, you know, the requirements for us to find that a variance is warranted, you know, it's designed to provide limited relief from requirements where strict application will create practical difficulty, I'm really feeling that, you know, going from a sixty-five-foot allowed use to a two-hundred-and-eighty-foot allowed use is not, you know, a limited variance from the requirement, I think that the life safety issues that have been presented are maybe remote, but the code was designed, you know, to implement those, and that a brand-new tower with a useful life that's going to be extended well into who knows when, is going to be kind of problematic and really interrogation of the intent of the code, so I'm having a real problem with this, has the applicant indicated that there'd be a less height that would allow a lot of the future uses that they have planned to be implemented?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
The way that the communications, the various clients are established at the heights they are on the existing tower, are part of an engineered network, so Borealis Broadband, which is, occupies the top section of the tower, has an established pattern and customer base from that height, now they supply high-speed broadband, but also emergency services as part of their broadband, GCI occupies more of the middle space of the tower, which is all part of their engineered network as well, so when you talk about taking the tower away or reducing the height, now you're talking about them having to find additional towers in the vicinity that may not exist, or may not be structurally capable of handling their equipment, which may also generate applications for new towers in the immediate vicinity to be able to cover the same area, which is extremely expensive, takes reengineering of the network in that area, and, you know, it's extremely disruptive.
But you also have a much stronger, albeit shorter, tower at the current location that can support, you know?
I wouldn't say it would be any stronger at all.
But isn't that why we're doing this, to make it stronger, so that you can support more things upon the tower?
It's, it is, part of the reason is to enable the current clients to add additional equipment, to enhance their facilities, but to also allow additional carriers that have shown an interest in locating on the tower, that would reduce the request for newer towers in the general vicinity, so approval of this does several things, one of which is you're getting rid of a fifty, nearly fifty-two-year-old tower, but you're allowing the current clients to enhance their equipment and coverage and services, and allowing new carriers on in an area that does not have facilities for them now, so you're reducing, I think you're reducing the request for new towers in the immediate vicinity.
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. I keep catching different verbiage, different words, different innuendo and so forth, and I kept hearing, it's, we're not building a stronger tower, we're building a new tower, the two towers are not connected, so we're not getting rid of the old tower, we're just building a new tower around it, and by your own words, they're not connected, they're not engineered together, although the owner could run some items still on that tower, so the old tower's not going away, so there's a secondary tower that's going around this unit, fully engineered, the old tower, and by the engineers' own words in the first hearing, are fine, there's verbiage in there that says, even though it's a fifty-year-old tower, it's still in good shape.
Are you referring to the structural analysis?
Yes.
In the conclusions part of that, what they're referring to is, with the tower wrap, the client can add their additional equipment.
But I just want to get the semantics so true, that we're not getting rid of the old tower.
Right.
The old tower is remaining, it's a new tower that's going around, so one of the questions I have on the new tower going around, does the current tower have a lightning rod?
I believe it does, yes.
Does it extend beyond two-hundred-and-eighty-three feet?
I'm not sure if that's the, is two-hundred-and-eighty-three the height of a lightning rod?
No, there's something different.
Sure.
Can you also state your name for the record?
Because it's my understanding that the lightning rod is also part of the tower. Because it's my understanding that the lightning rod is also part of the tower, therefore it's restricted to the same height limitation.
Um, my name's Richard Kinnipole, I'm the Regional Operations Manager for Vertical Bridge. There is not a lighting, lightning rod by the traditional sense. There is actually a cradle around the lighting beacon up top that accesses the lightning rod.
What will take place in the new tower?
It will still be the same, same design.
Still maximize at the cap as you propose at 283 feet?
Yes, and I also would like to clarify that the old structure is going to be attached to the new structure because the old structure does provide some support to the new structure. So, without, without the old structure, structure in place, then the wrap that we are doing, which is, is called a wrap by design, we would not be able to do it without the old structure in place.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, yeah, maybe a clarification. I think there's a tower height that we can approve as a conditional use, that this commission can approve as a conditional use, right?
Uh, correct.
Okay, and then there's also the separation distance, which talks about, um, protection of, um, other protected land uses, and that's approved by the assembly, not by?
You're correct, yep, the separation is going forth before the assembly, so it's separate.
Safety of additional, or adjacent residences and residential neighborhoods might be addressed at the assembly level, not here.
That is correct, it will be an assembly decision.
Thank you.
I would also like to say that, um, without this right now, no other carriers like GCI cannot upgrade their equipment at all. And this is actually what brought us to this moment right here, is they are trying to upgrade their equipment right now to facilitate the 5G, and without it, nobody will be able to do anything on it. So, as it stands, it has, you know, we really need this to be able to, for GCI and others to be able to upgrade their equipment for the newer technologies and whatnot.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, I was just wondering if you could speak just very briefly to, um, what you know about the availability of other towers in the area to handle the equipment that you plan to place on this?
There's actually only, uh, one other tower, I'm not quite sure who the tower owner is, it's over by the car wash further down Lake Otis. Currently, AT&amp;T is a tenant on there, but it is only 65 feet. There's no other towers really within reasonable distance to accommodate any other carriers.
And so you don't, you don't anticipate that that 65-foot tower would, would, um, be adequate to support the antennas that you're planning on placing on this one?
I would not presume to make any type of structural recommendation regarding another, another tower company's tower.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Commissioner Krishna?
Yeah, just to follow up on your last point, so the new technologies, the new equipment would not be doable unless the tower height was over 65 feet, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
No, what I'm saying is, uh, currently, nobody can upgrade their equipment on the tower without reinforcing this tower because the existing structure will not support new equipment.
Okay, but that equipment could be placed at a lower height?
No, like what Gary was saying earlier, currently, all the carriers and tenants that are on this tower, their existing rad heights are built into their network. If they were to get lowered, they would have to completely redesign their network, and, uh, unfortunately, it would have a severe impact with regards to 911 and other emergency services.
All right, thank you. Anyone else having questions or comments at this time? All right, um, would just like to point out that, um, this item, the public hearing was closed. However, just because we have new people in attendance, I want to repeat one part from our, um, public hearing process. Um, is that, uh, individuals may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except the commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision, and a fee for appeal is required at the time of filing. Just so that people have that information, um, we didn't read, I'll be reading the rest of the public hearing testimony before our next public hearing item. Since there are no other, thank you for coming up. Since there are no other questions, um, for staff or for the petitioner, um, I think we've reached that point in the night where it's time for a motion, what's the will of the body? I would like to remind people that there is a proposed resolution on, I believe, page 10 and 11, and that motions should be framed in the affirmative. Also, as another guiding principle, um, my recommendation is usually to make your motion basic, and if you're doing amendments, to do that after your original motion has been placed for purposes of passing. Commissioner Gardner?
Oh, sorry, I actually meant to just ask for clarification, do we have a motion pending?
I do not believe we do.
It supersedes it, okay. In that case, I'll, I'll, I guess in case, uh, 2019-0160, I will move for approval of the conditional use permit for a Type III telecommunications tower, subject to the conditions provided on page 11 of the packet, including a fifth condition for approval of the variance for the minimum separation distance from protected land uses, which is discussed on pages three and four of the staff packet.
And just as a minor correction, I'll say it's on pages 10 and 11 are the conditions. Um, seconded by Commissioner Winchester, um, just asking, do you need a further writing on item five? Okay. Uh, seconded by Commissioner Winchester, Commissioner Gardner, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, yeah, I will. So, I think I'll support this motion. Um, it took me a while to get there, but I think with the additional information we received, I'm comfortable that the, um, approval criteria discussed in the original staff packet in 2103-080D for conditional uses, um, is largely satisfied. The two exceptions, uh, I guess three exceptions, one would be addressed with the variance. Um, the other two would be the, um, I guess the setbacks in the tower height. And my understanding is that we have the authority to approve the conditional use, notwithstanding that they're not in technical compliance with, um, code. And given the unusual nature of this case, that the, a tower is currently existing with, um, those heights and setbacks, I think I'm, I'm willing to, to grant the approval, notwithstanding, um, those differences. Also, I was originally concerned about whether we needed to also meet the approval criteria in 05, 2105-040K6, and, um, I think that those are also satisfied. The ones that I particularly had concerns with were whether we can make a finding that there was no existing tower or structure that it can accommodate or place the applicant's proposed antenna, and I think that is the case. It's not entirely clear what all towers are in the area, though it sounds like there really isn't any that could do this. And more importantly, I think, given the fact that this is, the antennas, um, a lot of them are part of a network that's already in place, placing them somewhere else would require readjusting and making modifications to those networks. And then also, um, we saw information that there was no alternative technology that does not require the use of tower structures, um, that could otherwise meet, um, meet what they're intending to do here. And then finally, I just wanted to note that in 21040K3, there's also language that I find confusing about finding regarding whether we are unreasonably discriminating, and I, I'm just interpreting that to, to be that we can't do any action that would unreasonably discriminate, and I don't see any basis to conclude that we are, so I'm comfortable that that is met as well.
Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yes, this is a difficult case. Actually, I think I've kind of gone back and forth a couple of times from, from last time we, uh, this case was started. But I definitely understand the logic, where, uh, I think Commissioner Bailey summarized it in that this, the tower height's not changing, the separation distance isn't changing, and we have a conditional use for that existing tower, so, uh, what's the big deal here? Kind of thing, um, and I guess it's a philosophical, um, idea as far as, uh, when you have a conditional use, just what that covers. In this case, the existing tower clearly has a conditional use for those, um, those dimensions that are, are no longer, are no longer meet the, the current code. But, uh, in my mind, when they, when there's a new tower, and this is, I guess we've gone back and forth, this is a new tower that wraps around the old one, and it could be connected, but it really is a new tower, I, I'm of the mind that, uh, the new tower needs to meet the new code. So, um, we put up with, with things that don't meet new codes, but when they need to be retired, um, then anything that replaces it needs to meet the new code. So, I'm, I don't support the, the current motion. So, I feel like that the, the, the proposed tower can be 65 feet. If they want to wrap it up that high, that's fine, but, uh, I'm, I don't propose the, the current motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. Um, I would like to jump in and state that, um, one thing that I thought was important in my making the decision is that a new tower or an alter tower would both have to make the conditional use findings. And based on the, um, items I see in the staff packet, it meets the findings, whether it's a new tower or an alter tower. Um, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, this is an area where the land built up around the tower, not vice versa. It's not the fact that we have this new tower going into a place where towers have never been before. This is something that's been there before any of the residential use was in place. Um, for the same reasons, I find it's consistent with the purpose and ten of the zoning district, um, that, um, this is providing that access to that area. Um, and then, more importantly, I remember sitting on Planning and Zoning Commission when we were talking about the cell phone tower ordinance and the importance of it. And one of the main things we kept going over is really wanting people to reutilize these areas where the cell phone towers already exist. And this is the biggest example of that I have seen since I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are literally taking a cell phone tower, or not a cell phone, an antenna tower, I'm not sure on the proper verbiage for it, but they're taking it and they're reusing it to the same exact footprint, but providing additional service and more safety to the community around it. Um, so I think for all those reasons, um, it meets those tower height, the co-location, um, additional items that were mentioned by Commissioner Gardner, and that, uh, there would be some areas where variances would be needed. Um, but should those be set, I think this is the best example of using a current footprint and providing additional service and additional safety to the community around it. Um, I would also like to point out, I mentioned it in, on the record earlier, but that notice was given to the community council, and there was no negative feedback on this from the community council at all. Um, they were given drawings of what it would look like before and after, um, they discussed it in detail. There was only one question, um, that was posed by it, and still there was no objections to it. Um, for all those reasons, I will be voting to, uh, approve. Commissioner Winchester?
Yeah, I too will be voting to approve, although I do agree with Commissioner Strike about some of the difficulties in this case, uh, calling it what it is. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Looney about the safety aspect of this, uh, I thought it was well spoken. To me, I think Commissioner Anderson brought up that, that safety will be addressed by the public of the assembly, so that's another catch point in all this. I think the lack of public opposition is a big sticking point with me. There's been opportunity to, uh, for the neighbors to weigh in, and they have it. And also, uh, the tertiary benefit of improved service to the public, uh, those are all reasons why I'll support this.
Commissioner Anderson?
Um, yeah, I'm going to support the motion to approve and agree with Commissioner Winchester and Bailey for most of their topics. It, we'd like to point out again that the separation district, uh, distance is being addressed by the assembly, not by this commission. Um, that the existing tower height is going to match the new tower height, uh, and there was no, no community pushback. And one last thing on the, uh, side obscuring fence around the guy wires, I think we're not actually approving a conditional, uh, or sorry, an approval of the guy wires being less, um, sorry, not, not meeting the setback requirements, but we have a condition of approval that, uh, a side obscuring fence detail will be provided to obscure the guy wires that are within the setback.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, I will call for a vote. Oh. Commissioner Strike?
I'd like to thank the petitioner when he acknowledged that this, um, is a difficult and confusing somewhat process that we've gone through here. I think a lot of the issues that we've seen get tied up in semantics and terminology and so forth. I did appreciate the gentleman who came in up here with you, and he helped one aspect when he said the two towers would be tied together. And that helps me get past the new tower a bit, so... The way it was presented, new tower standalone, it is a bigger footprint, it is a different footprint, it is a different technology, it is a different engineering, um, um, tower, engineered tower than what is currently there. So, there is differences there, but when you tie those two towers now together, because my problem was getting past the grandfathered rights. The whole purpose of getting past the grandfather right is not to have that owner go through an expenditure to bring and chase code and always bring things up to, up to date, current, something they don't have control of. But when there's a major change done to the property, when there's a major use change done to the property, which we're seeing here, to say that you're grandfathered in, and I should be able to tear the old tower down and put a new tower up, I can't get, I can't get past that. To me, I'm, I'm dead set against that, I think it sets a bad precedent, and the grandfathered aspect of, it's just taking it too far, too far into the reach. But if we can show that the tower is tied together with the existing tower, now we can get inside a little bit of semantics and we can get the, um, and I think that's what the intent was all along. And I think that's why we're here with a conditional use, is to create a tie-in. But nothing gave us until further verbiage that these were two separate towers, just one was inside the other and it was a new tower. That's where I couldn't get past the grandfather rights. Tie them together, I can get there. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, I just wanted to, um, clarify a point I had made earlier that I don't think I made very clear, and that relates to, um, the concern Commissioner Looney raised about, you know, if we're, if we're building a new structure, let's, let's build it to code, and I'm sensitive to that concern. I think the, the way I'm able to, um, in my mind, address it in this particular case is, I, I think it would be one thing if we were just talking about structures independent of anything else, and I might be more, um, inclined to deny the application. But because of the fact that there is, there are existing networks that will continue to exist in the way that they were designed, and that, my understanding from the discussion is that those networks are dependent upon the location of where the different antennas are located at the moment, that that is a connecting element between the old tower and the new proposed wrap that, um, I think helps kind of support and, and justify in this particular case, including, um, within this conditional use, some aspects of the tower that are not technically compliant with code as it's currently written.
All right, call for a vote. And that motion passes. Um, you get it, Commissioner Spinali, thank you. Um, while we're shuffling commissioner members right now, I'll go ahead and, uh, read our, um, the procedure for our public hearings. And thank you, Commissioner Looney. Uh, the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at, at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on the public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked by, questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to the action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. takes, except for commission recommendations of the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed but with the clerk's office within twenty days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Uh, we will now move on to, uh, case twenty twenty dash zero zero one two. Staff, can we hear the report?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll begin the staff's presentation on, uh, this conditional use amendment case. Uh, first of all, uh, there is a laid-on-the-table item that I wanted to point to, uh, the G1 supplementary packet one. These are comments, uh, submitted after the packet, uh, was finalized. And, um, on the backside of it, it says, "A resolution in support of an amendment to a conditional use permit, um, this, uh, for the, uh, Girdwood Brewing Company." This was resolution twenty twenty dash, uh, four, adopted by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors on, uh, February eighteenth, um, of this year. It says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors supports the amendment, this conditional use, uh, for the brewery, um, the, to include the entire existing building for use by the Girdwood Brewing Company LLC." Um, so the Girdwood Brewing Company is requesting an amendment to the existing conditional use approval to expand the brewery inside the building. The site plan shows new parking spaces because of the increase in the parking requirement, um, and a different location for the, um, uh, onsite pedestrian pathway, um, and some other minor changes to the, the site plan. Uh, the traffic department, um, recommends several conditions of approval related to the parking lot design details, such as the signage, um, onsite, you know, signage, uh, like no parking signs and that, um, curbing around the parking lot island, um, and the design of accessible parking spaces, um, and accessible routes. Now, I will note that the, the traffic department, um, uh, confirmed that all of these site design requirements, um, have been met with, um, with the land use permit, that is the building permit on the other side of the house. So, um, the Girdwood Brewing Company is pursuing, um, their building permit, it's called a land use permit when it's in Girdwood, simultaneously with this, uh, conditional use amendment, um, that is before you tonight. And, um, so we're kind of looking at, uh, a site plan that is, uh, had all these requirements for little minor changes. Well, those have all been made and, uh, approved, they have a sign off from the traffic department. Just think it's worth noting that, that these conditions have been met, so it just kind of one came before the other. Um, in terms of public comments, a hundred and nineteen public hearing notices were mailed on January tenth. No responses were received from the public, no comments were, well, we did receive now the comments from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, their resolution in support of it. So, it, with, uh, the nine standards of approval or approval criteria for conditional uses, the first one, um, the proposed use is consistence, consistent with the comprehensive plan, the standard is met. Uh, the petition site is located in the area identified as commercial in the nineteen ninety-five Girdwood Area Plan. This classification is for areas substantially developed for commercial purposes, and that are expected to remain so during the duration of the plan, um, and for vacant areas best suited for commercial development. Um, this site is developed with a mixed-use building containing a brewery, taproom, residential apartment, and vacant commercial space. Uh, the site conforms to the commercial land use designation in the Girdwood Area Plan. Uh, the brewery plans to expand, um, within, um, the building into these vacant, uh, commercial spaces. Um, approval criteria two, uh, the standard is met. The original conditional use approval, Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-five, determined that all the GC-ten dimensional standards were met. This amendment, um, is required because of the expansion of this brewery, general manufacturing use, within the existing building. So even though they're not changing a lot, um, it's technically required because, um, it's a change to the previously approved, uh, conditional use permit for general manufacturing. Approval criteria three, the standard is met. Um, the site design requirements, uh, have all been met. Um, approval criteria four, the standard is met. Since the expansion is internal to the building, there will be no new impacts, uh, that need to be addressed. The site continues to comply with the site design requirements, uh, for the brewery. Approval criteria five, uh, the standard is met. Beverage manufacturing is classified as general manufacturing, um, which requires a conditional use permit in the GC-ten, and that's what we're, um, uh, doing today. Approval criteria six, the standard is met. The petition site is surrounded by GC-ten on three sides. The Aliaska Highway runs along the north property boundary. The tract of land is loc, the tract of land located to the west and south of this site is vacant. The only developed property abutting the site is the church to the east. The petition site generates more traffic during weekdays than the church, but the site remains compatible with the church as its neighbor. Uh, approval criteria seven, the standard is met. No significant, significant adverse impacts are anticipated result from the proposed expansion of this brewery within the building. The brewery will continue to be completely enclosed within the building. Um, approval criteria eight, the standard is met. The existing driveway is not changing. The, uh, site plan shows new bicycle parking spaces on the east side of the building, and the site is served by, um, the Glacier Valley Transit Bus Route. Uh, approval criteria nine, um, the standard is met. Uh, the Girdwood, uh, Volunteer Fire Department is located nearby, the, um, uh, Girdwood is covered by a police service from the Whittier Police Department. Public utilities, as well as a private well, are already installed on the property. The department's recommending approval of this amendment, um, uh, to an existing conditional use for general manufacturing in GC-ten, um, with, uh, conditions of approval, um, one through, um, four on pages seven and eight of your packet. Conditions of approval one and two are standard, um, just that it's approved subject to this, the plans that you see in your packet, and that they have to record a notice of zoning action against the deed for the property. Approval criteria three, I'm sorry, uh, condition of approval three, um, states, um, "This approval shall be revoked if a, if a certificate of completion for all site improvements is not issued by October thirtieth, um, twenty twenty-one." Um, that's because, um, not all of the improvements, um, uh, associated with, uh, um, the land use permit, uh, have been completed to date. Um, and, uh, this condition of approval, which says that, you know, um, they'll no longer have a conditional use permit unless they're made by a date certain, that would, um, uh, that's our sort of backstop that, that all improvements, uh, will be made, as is shown in the plans that, uh, would be approved tonight. Um, approval, I'm sorry, condition of approval number four, it says, "Obtain, uh, Traffic Engineering Department's approval for the following." As I said, that they've already, um, satisfied that with the building permit. I have confirmation from the traffic department on that. Um, so, um, I think the last thing I wanted to cover is that, um, uh, um, one of the, one of the members of the commission, um, sent, uh, um, a list of questions, um, to the planning department, um, that they had about, um, about this case. And I want to thank, um, Mr. Strike for sending to me in, in advance, because that allowed me to sort of think about the questions and write a response to everybody, so that was, I'm grateful to him for that. Um, so, um, sort of in summary, um, one of the questions, questions was, um, you know, are all of the conditions of approval that were, um, that were on the first, the original conditional use, have they been met? And, um, they have, the applicant satisfied all the conditions of approval that were placed on them with the first case, and they have a stamped approved site plan. Um, what's, what's not complete is the land use permit, which is a different step. Um, you know, they began the, the process with the land use permit, but, um, that permit does not have a certificate of completion yet. Um, with, uh, the conditional approval that I read to you, recommended by the department here, um, you know, they'll be obligated to, you know, complete that. Um, it is an active permit, um, and, uh, they would be obligated to complete it by a, a date certain. Um, another, uh, question that was, was raised was, you know, what's the deal about the tenant-owner? Um, so the building is, um, owned by Tim Cabana, the property is owned by Tim Cabana, but it's, the, the brewery, um, is the, uh, the only tenant in the building. They have rights to the whole building. So, um, how does that work when there's a tenant and then there's a, a building owner? Well, um, you know, the planning department, um, has, um, a letter on, uh, page sixteen of your packet that is the property owner, Tim Cabana, with his signature, that we have the original, um, a letter in the, in the file. Um, it's, it's committing to make all improvements associated with the conditional use permit, um, you know, previously, and, uh, on this new one, uh, tonight. Um, as well as, the first page of the application form for a conditional use permit, um, is signed by the property owner, um, and it's his original signature. And it says, "I hereby certify that I am, um, owner of the property described above, and that I petition for a conditional use permit in conformance with Title Twenty-One of the Anchorage Municipal Code of Ordinances." So, um, the, you know, the question of like tenant-owner, it's a pretty, uh, normal thing where, um, the tenant is making application, uh, on property that they don't, um, own. Um, so we believe that that covers, uh, that question. Um, there was another question raised about, um, the food trucks, and, um, uh, you know, so the GC-ten zoning district where this site is located, um, does not allow food trucks. Um, the, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors has adopted a resolution asking for the code to be changed to allow food trucks in the GC-ten. Um, and the planning department is writing that ordinance to bring forward to the commission now. We don't have it tonight, but it'll be forthcoming soon. Um, you know, the planning department discussed internally, well, why is it that, that, that the GC-ten doesn't allow food trucks? About half of the, uh, uh, Girdwood Commercial Districts allow food trucks, the other half do not. Um, and, uh, you know, we couldn't come up with a reason why food trucks would be not allowed here. So, um, we'll be bringing forward, uh, an ordinance to, um, to this body, uh, for a recommendation to the Assembly on, you know, allowing food trucks. What the applicant has done is showed on their site plan the future location for a food truck, should it be, um, be, should the code be changed to allow food trucks? Otherwise, you know, it's not allowed use. Um, but if the code changed, then it would become. Um, it's not changed yet, but, uh, um, that ordinance will be coming to this body for review. Um, I think the, the last question that, that I, let's see here, um, well, it's sort of another thing about the, the food trucks. So, um, I guess there's two more points that I, that I saw, um, coming from, um, Mr. Strike's questions, and one was, um, you know, how is it that a food truck has been allowed to operate on the property? Well, Land Use Enforcement Office, I'm not a Land Use Enforcement Officer, but the Land Use Enforcement, um, Office, um, goes out and enforces on zoning code complaints. So it's when a member of the public, you know, calls the hotline and says, you know, somebody's breaking the zoning laws, or I have concerns about this property, and then a code enforcement officer goes out and investigates and issues citation or resolves the, um, the complaint. They open up a case, and there's a process to it. It's, it's like a law enforcement type of process. Um, but, you know, there's no, um, there's no complaint, my understanding is there's never been a complaint, um, against this property about the food truck. Um, and of course, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors adopted that resolution, um, in support of changing the code to allow food trucks. Um, I guess, yeah, that's really the, the end of my comments. I'd be happy to answer questions, and the applicant is here to, uh, for any questions you might have of them as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike.
Yeah, thank you. And to the staff, thank you for getting those questions answered, and just to clarify a couple of these items. On the, um, front application for conditional use, which you cited, where it had Mr. Cabana's name, and you read the certification, if you scroll down under his signature, you'll see owner is checked, and under the box representative, where it says representatives must provide written proof of authorization. So your own form identifies who's able to represent here, whether it be the owner or a representative, and the petitioner representative is not identified on the front cover, although they are identified in a separate, separate section. And so I just question that it should be the building owner who should be representing today, absent authority granted to their designated representative. And I believe that semantics is important as we, not just for this case, but for all cases, where we've actually stopped some testimony in the past and proceeded, um, but if we're going to follow the rules, let's follow the rules. And I, I think one of our jobs here is to make sure the rules are applied equally across the board. Um, the question on the food trucks, that's been an open discussion, and that's been brought forth to you now for the last two and a half, three years. But I'm glad to see that the Aliaska Board of Commissioners, or is that what we're calling them, is jumping in to change GC-ten. Um, no offense, I was the first one trying to get that changed three and a half, four years ago, and actually encouraged the group at the first meeting that we had to push this, let's change it. Now, I personally believe the right route is to take this GC-ten property that's located south of the Aliaska Highway, and we should move for a rezoning, because there's other elements, not just the food trucks. Let, let's help these guys grow, let's help these guys. Now, we can lead them to the water and so forth, but personally, I believe zoning will help take care of food trucks, restaurants, retail sales, which you mentioned in the first criteria about, um, the intended GC-ten district is to permit development of a limited range of non-retail commercial uses. We can get into semantics, what is or isn't retail, um, but I believe there to be significant retail taking place. Let's help them. Let's, let's, let's at least go before, when you're working on the changeover for the, um, food truck, let's add retail into that, too. Let's help these guys get compliant so the, they don't come under the scrutiny, under the microscope. Let's get them compliant and get them running and be the most successful operation down there. I'm all for it. But let's make sure they're following the rules to get there. We have a new change coming about, not there yet. Maybe we can get ahead of the concerts, the four concerts that are being proposed to be added. So if we're gonna go through and bring everything forth, let's help them out there, too. Let's make sure concerts, if they so choose, I don't know, I would think they would want to do something, music or something there in that regard, at least four times a year is what they're being proposed by the state, but let's make sure they're compliant. So if we can get ahead of that curve, let's help them. My question to you initially was, what requirements from the original conditional use aren't being fulfilled? And basically, other than clearing out the, um, land use permit and so forth, I think is what you said, the building permit, that you indicated that they were compliant. I'm going off of memory now, but I believe that this commission stipulated that the path, walkway pathway was part of the conditional use, that there would be a separate walkway to the highway, not part of the driveway. And if I read correctly, you have language in here that, um, number H, pedestrian circulation, the site plan continues to show a pedestrian pathway from the Aliaska Highway to the, to the site. So that's telling me that my memory may be correct, that it was a requirement, but that's not in place. So I don't know if you stand corrected or if I stand corrected regarding all the uses being completed. That would appear not to be one that's been completed. thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Strike. Um, I'll, I'll respond to the, uh, points that Mr. Strike made, uh, with the department's position, um, in the order that, uh, he asked them. Um, so page twelve of your packet is the application form that the applicant filled out. It says that the petitioner- the application form that the applicant filled out. It says that the petitioner is the Girdwood Brewing Company. They're the ones that are coming forward with this application. And the property owner signed under the property owner authorization. What Mr. Strike, what you referred to here is that Tim Cabana signed as the owner, and he didn't sign as the representative. He's obviously not the representative. And representatives must provide written proof of authorization. That sort of small print there is if Girdwood Brewing Company was the petitioner, and Girdwood Brewing Company signed here instead of Mr. Cabana, they'd be checking the box that said that they were the representative, and they would separately have to provide a letter of authorization. So, you know, this is the normal and typical way that we see these applications where the Girdwood Brewing Company is the applicant. They went ahead and got Tim Cabana to sign as the owner, so they didn't need a letter of authorization. But the planning department, you know, insisted on them providing a letter from the property owner stating that all the improvements associated with this conditional use would be made. And that letter's on page 16 of your packet. Now, you know, we feel that this issue is totally and completely covered. It's a non-issue that we have the owner's authorization. If anyone thinks that the owner isn't authorizing Girdwood Brewing Company to bring forward this application, then the commission could make a motion to add a condition of approval, requiring them to provide a separate letter stating that Girdwood Brewing Company is authorized to represent them. I don't think that Girdwood Brewing Company would be opposed to a condition of approval like that. We don't believe it's necessary. But so that we don't have to debate this, you know, you could ask for that to be a condition of approval, and, you know, they would get Tim to sign a letter for them. Okay. Food trucks, or rezones, the issue before us today is this conditional use permit. You know, I don't, rezoning, changing from GC10 to a different commercial, Girdwood Commercial Zoning District, that's not the main issue for tonight. And I don't see the property owner proposing to change the zoning of his property. As far as the retail going on, so Mr. Strike's referring to the t-shirt and hats sales at the property. And, you know, the t-shirt and hat sales is really, you know, accessory to the brewery. So, you know, they're not selling Patagonia hats and t-shirts and that. They're selling Girdwood Brewing Company hats and t-shirts. They're not selling groceries. They're just selling Girdwood Brewing Company t-shirts. That, it seems to be accessory to the brewery. So is Middleway Cafe a retail store, or is it a restaurant? Middleway Cafe is a restaurant, and they sell t-shirts that say Middleway Cafe in them. In the same with Snow City Cafe. There are many restaurants that sell t-shirts and hats. So that's where we would look at that. Concerts, you know, Mr. Strike raised a good point about concerts. What he's referring to is if you've been following the news, it appears that the state legislature is changing some of the rules on breweries to allow them to stay open two hours later and to hold up to four live events in a calendar year. You know, I don't, this is new to me. I don't know whether the GC10 would allow concerts or not. It seems like a special event. I don't know whether it's not allowed. I don't know whether or not the Girdwood Brewing Company has any intention of doing something like that. It's kind of a hypothetical, but it's a good point that he raises. As far as the walkway, so the first conditional use permit that came before the commission showed a walkway alongside the driveway, and they perfected that in the final site plan, the stamped approved site plan. And they're showing it here as well. So when we say that the conditions of approval were met, we're not saying that everything in this site plan has been built. What we're saying is that the, you know, there's a, we're saying that there should be a separated pedestrian pathway leading from the Alavesca Highway to the front door of the apartment and to the main entrance to the brewery. And they're showing it, and it'll be required of the land use permit. It is required of the land use permit. They have an active permit. And they're really motivated to, you know, to see this, see that permit closed out. But, you know, they can speak to that. So when we say, you know, have all the improvements been made, that's not what's at issue here. I sit in an office and review a drawing, and, you know, when they come to the counter with a drawing showing this, I'll say, yes, condition of approval to show it on the drawing has been made. Whether or not they go and build it, that's a question for a separate office, the Building Safety Division, that processes building permits. So those are, I guess, I try to respond to those questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike.
Yeah, and to take those points, I'll capitulate on the Girdwood Brewing Company is a petitioner, and that the owner of the company, on behalf then of the petitioner, has signed. And what's before us today is the use inside the building. I have no problem with that. But whenever we, if we're going to talk about any of the requirements that have to do with the land use outside the building, outside the tenancy of the landlord-tenant rules that they may be following, can they speak for the landlord that they're going to go ahead and agree to finish areas of the land use requirements? Because this came before us in 2016. Flash forward four, nearly four years, some of the items aren't done. Who's feet are we going to hold to the fire here to get these things, these items completed? You used the example of the retail, that Middleway Cafe. I believe Middleway Cafe doesn't have a zoning problem. They're free to sell. Retail. This particular property is specifically prohibited from doing retail business. So one of the things that when we come before us, we look at conditional use and expansion thereof, we look to see that the requirements that the petitioner has agreed to in the previously, have they followed through? It goes to credibility, goes to intent, it goes to trust, it goes to being a good citizen. Are they following the rules? Now, if they're not, let's help get them, let's help move them forward. Let's help get them there. So I'm a little reluctant because we don't have the owner of the property, as far as I know, unless one of the owners of the properties here, to speak, that he can speak to the land use area. But we're supposed to go based on a letter that says, hey, I'll agree to whatever they agree to. Well, they're not even authorized to discuss anything outside whatever is in the request here. They're only authorized to discuss their own internal land, their own internal use of the building, which, oh, by the way, I don't have a problem with. Thank you.
Commissioner Spennelli.
I believe the letter actually states that they are allowed to, they're authorized to make any changes or improvements required by the CUP. If you want me to go back and read it to you, so, I think that's a non-issue. The retail, Greg, Commissioner Strike, I mean, if the planning department thinks it's okay, I don't, you're going to have to provide more than just saying it's not okay. So, that's what you said, but that's not what the municipal planning department said. They said it's an accessory use. This is not a retail facility with glass storefronts, but they're saying it's allowed. So, I mean, if you have qualms with the planning department, then this, tonight's not the night. This isn't the place. I'd like to move on with the case, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could just clarify briefly with respect to Watershed's comments and their concern that the parking lot layout may encroach into the Class C wetlands. I noted that it says you reviewed the wetlands permit and determined the new parking lot is consistent. Does that just mean that, well, I guess, could you give a little bit of color as to what that review was and what conclusion you reached?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Watershed Management Services has authority over streams only. They don't look at wetlands only streams. And the Tobish in the planning department is responsible for administering the municipality's wetland permitting program. The, this site has an approved wetland permit, which allows you to put fill into wetlands. They cease to be wetlands in the areas that are approved to have fill. The, this site plan that you're seeing today pretty nearly matches the wetlands permit issued by the planning department. This issue is resolved. The, I went back to Watershed Management Services and showed them the wetland permit and said that the planning department, the Tobish who administers this plan, has found that it is in conformance and consistent with the wetlands permit, and they said that was fine.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question for staff regarding the grading and the drainage. I believe on page 47, Mr. Cunningham raised some questions on Watershed Management Services and the drainage catch basin. This is being exclusive from the issue that Commissioner Gardner referenced regarding the wetlands. But as far as like whether there's stormwater retention and detention, the grading details. And then in AMC 2109070, Site Development Design Standards, you say that the new standard is met because a new drainage analysis will be required with the land use permit. However, I didn't see anything in the department recommendations which would enforce that. Is that because it would be part of something else that I'm not seeing, or where am I, what am I missing?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, I chased this question down, too. So Kyle Cunningham submitted comments to the planning department for Watershed Management Services. And he said, are we gonna, will Watershed Management Services be reviewing the SWIP again with this future building permit? And so what I did is I went to the building permit, because it's active, and there's a requirement for them to submit a new grading and drainage plan in SWIP. And Paul Lacina in Watershed Management Services will be reviewing that. And so I went back to Kyle and I said, are you satisfied? Or does there need to be a condition of approval added to this, that they do it upfront? He said, no, we just didn't know that when they come back through with the new building permit, we wanted to be sure that we weren't missed on that review. But the building permit requires Paul Lacina's review, which is all he wanted.
Okay. Just as a follow-up, when it says a certificate of completion for all site improvements, would that include the building permit being fully reviewed?
So I just use building permit and land use permit interchangeably. If you're within the Anchorage Bowl, then it's called a building permit because you're in the building service area, and it's called a certificate of occupancy when you've closed out your building permit. When you're in Chugiak Eagle River or in Girdwood, it's called a land use permit because you're in the land use service area. You're outside of the building permitting area. And instead of a certificate of occupancy, it's called a certificate of completion. So whatever the terminology is, they're required to, so Cora Weaver or someone in the Land Use Enforcement Office will, prior to the certificate of completion being issued on this property, will go out and inspect the property to look to see that everything in this drawing has been, had been done exactly the way the plan shows.
Okay. So it will, the drainage analysis will be required before it's permitted. And then separately on that issue of item number three, why October 30th, 2021?
You know, we thought that that would give sufficient time to set up the applicant to success in completing all the improvements. To say that they must complete all the improvements, because here this is a short development season, by date certain of this year, that if they didn't, you know, if there was some sort of hiccup that prevented them from being able to do that, then, then we would be forced to revoke the conditional use. So we thought that two years seemed like a, you know, an agreeable amount of time.
So just to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, Anchorage is, Anchorage, Girdwood included, is weird. We can only do construction from May to October 30th, essentially. That gives them a small window to do construction. Let's say they run into one hiccup. It could potentially, what would normally for a location be a delay of one month, now turns into a delay of one year. And so that's why it's till October 30th, 2021?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, do you know of any other non-retail establishments that have retail as an accessory use that would otherwise not be permitted?
Yeah. My coworker was just saying, well, are there any marijuana shops in there that are selling their swag to? You know, I don't, so the GC10, there's no development in GC10 except for this site.
So when, it's your interpretation that when it says no retail, it means no primary retail, not no retail's accessory use?
Oh, yeah. I mean, the, the t-shirts and swag is accessory. And even the code says, let's see here, and except, so if you look at the table of accessory uses in Girdwood, it says an accessory use or structure that is not listed in this table shall comply with the standards set forth. So it accounts that sometimes there are accessory uses that aren't listed in the accessory table.
Okay.
Let's see here. An accessory, so in Girdwood, Chapter 9, the Table of Accessory Uses, the subsection is unlisted accessory uses or structures. And accessory use or structure not listed in this table may be permitted, subject to compliance with applicable regulations of this title. So it just, you know, they're in the business of, you know, brewing beer, and it would appear that the t-shirt sales are accessory or subordinate to, because they wouldn't be there to, there has to be the brewery in order for them to sell the t-shirts for the brewery. It's not a general retail use. It's really just t-shirts that go along with their beer sales.
And then I have one more question. It might be two questions. This footpath, let's say it's not built by October 30th, 2021. Is their conditional use permit still valid, or does that invalidate it? And I'm not talking about the site plan. I'm talking about physically built footpath.
Correct. If there is any, well, yeah, if they, if the pathway isn't constructed, then we would send them a letter of expiration or, you know, abandonment or revoking their conditional use permit, and then follow that process. I'm confident that that won't be the case. They have a lot writing on that.
And then, kind of as a follow-up to that, I was on the commission when we did our first one, and I don't remember, did we put something like that in place for the first one, or was it just based on it being on the site plan, not on it actually physically being built?
Oh, all of our conditions are usually based on that it's getting the site plan right, and then the construction has, comes with the, with the land use permit. This is a unique, well, not unique, this is a pretty rare condition of approval that we placed, that they lose this approval tonight unless they do something on the building permit side. It's usually just handled with the building permit side. But we felt that this was sort of a special case where we wanted the assurances that they would follow through with completing the land use permit.
All right. I think that solves that issue for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn.
So I haven't been to the site in a while. Has the parking lot and driveway been paved?
It has, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from staff, or can we hear from the petitioner? All right. The petitioner would like to come up and speak to this item. And when you do so, please state your name for the record, and if you would like to reserve any of your time for rebuttal.
Hi, I'm Josh Hegna with Girdwood Brewing Company.
And I'm Rory Marinco.
We're both co-founders of Girdwood Brewing Company. We've also got Connor from Z Architects with us. Three years ago, we opened with just a few of us owners doing all the work up at Girdwood Brewing Company, and now we're employing over a dozen locals year-round, well-paying jobs. We're truly in need of more space to operate the business. As Francis already stated, our community council, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, has given us a resolution of support for the project. has given us a resolution of support for the project. The land use committee meetings in Girdwood, the G-Boss meetings are quite the process. And throughout months of this, you know, including the food trucks that were brought up, we've received nothing but support and positive comments from them, unanimous votes. Trust and credibility are extremely important to us. So we've gone the extra mile and been very transparent with our plans to the community, not just at the G-Boss and LUC meetings. We've gone door-to-door talking to people. We've presented numerous meetings, the Girdwood Chamber meetings, Alliance, stuff like that. And most importantly, I think we've done a good job of being neighbors with Girdwood Chapel, who we are right next to. I've now met with the third new pastor and getting a thumbs up from all them. My partner Rory and I are both fathers living in Girdwood with kids aged ranging from three to fifteen. I'm the retired school librarian down there. So, you know, trust me, we are absolutely committed to being good neighbors and responsible business partners. In regards to, I know Commissioner Strike, he brought up the SB fifty-two and concerts and stuff. I think that's a long way off. It is not passed. It just made it out of the Senate, still has to go through the House. So we're talking about future things there. But that's, we'll deal with that when we have to. It's not before us right now. If you've been to Girdwood Brewing Company, you know, we take great pride in providing a safe and beautiful environment. We look forward to expanding this vision to the whole building and the exterior stuff too. I think you guys will be pleased with what happens next year. Yeah? You got anything else you want to add?
Just, just in regards to the concern that maybe some of the site plan improvements might, might not be completed. The extra step we've taken this far, per the recommendation of the Planning Department, was to, the old land use permit, we, it was operating under, or not operating, it had expired CCO. So we rolled the conditions of approval for that one into a new land use permit that we got a builder-owner form signed, saying that me as the, as the tenant at Girdwood Brewing can pursue all the construction and completion. And I'm responsible for that as the person who took out the land use permit now. So that's our teeth in the game now, seeing that we're gonna, we're gonna follow this through to completion. In the previous time, it was the, the landowner who was responsible for that and didn't complete those improvements in a timely manner.
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. Guys, I applaud you. Great job. I mean, love the place. And you'll notice that, you know, while I've been critical with some of the questions and the format, it's just making sure that, in my opinion, that everyone's operating on a level parity with each other. But great job, what, what you've accomplished and what you've done down there. Thank you for recognizing the, on the land use piece, the pathway that's not completed yet. I believe that in the proposal before us, it identifies a date of October two thousand and twenty-one for completion. That's a year and a half from now. You've already had three years. Any issue if we move that to two thousand and twenty?
Based on the significant snowfall we've received already this year, that could be troubling. I mean, you know, trying to get some stuff paved. The other, the other main thing is that, you know, June, July, and August into September are our most, is our busiest time of year. So throwing a construction, an exterior construction curveball into that, that could, you know, compromise our parking would, would potentially impact it.
Five to six-foot wide path going down from the building down to the street. I've been in construction for twenty-five years. It's about a five-day job with all the equipment. If you're gonna do it yourself and hand-cut all the, all the trees, different story, I understand. But from a construction perspective, it's less than a five-day job. The, I hope you work with the city in that notion of the food trucks. I don't want to see the food trucks go away. I just want to help you guys get compliant. And they're, sound like they're on the pathway to that. My biggest concern is that you not have food trucks now. I don't know if there's a temporary emergency-type thing that we can do to help you be compliant. If there was, sign me up. Is there, is there a short way that we can get them compliant on that? It's a rhetorical question. There's your guy right there. But I don't think you would have much hesitancy from this commission to get behind it.
We appreciate that.
Some of the comments regarding retail. I'm a stickler. I, I look at the code, I see the checkbox, I see what's checked, what you can do, what, what, what is allowed, what's not allowed. And clearly GC-ten retail sales is not allowed. Even in the verbiage. And I hear ancillary, I hear incidental. Let me just pose a question to you. How much is retail sales part of your overall volume? And be careful.
Be careful with?
I got it, I got a statement from you.
Okay. For retail sales, I don't know what our numbers are. They were really good right out of the gates, but they're certain they've been declining. Once you sell one Girdwood Brewing Company t-shirt, somebody doesn't want to go buy a second one, so.
Right out of the gate, they were nearly fifty percent.
Yeah, we were, we were pretty good, like twenty-five, thirty percent right out of the gate, if I recall correctly.
You came bad, here's your words, fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
Thirty to fifty percent of their business, depending.
What are those, what are those words from?
I could, I could give you a profit and loss. That, that's not accurate. They're more like fifteen to twenty. Maybe, maybe in December and right out of the gate in March, they were, but.
Well, Josh, you were part of the interview.
What was this, what was this interview from?
I'll give it to you afterwards.
Was it after, maybe for the first year we opened?
Local crews are killing it.
I can guarantee you, now open up our books, they're not, I wish they were that big a percent.
You tell me they're ten to fifteen, I'll go incidental, I'll go ancillary. You tell me thirty to fifty, and it's major.
It's definitely not thirty to fifty. Although I wish it were.
Our, our beer production sales are increasing, but our, our merch sales remain relatively constant, so.
And you got, you got, you got a forum here. What else do you need? What can we do to help you make, be more successful?
I like the idea of expediting that food truck process.
I put it to Francis to say, what can we do?
But I've also been told to stand down from that, so.
I, when I go out there, I want to eat.
The Girdwood Brewing Company has been riding the Planning Department to expeditiously process this ordinance. They were getting questioned about it weekly by them. And I've just been given the green light to proceed with it. And so, I don't know, I, there's only so much work I can do right now. I'm working on coronavirus stuff. There's a lot going on. We're a really active department right now. But I, I'm committed to bringing forward that ordinance as quickly as I can. I, I can't touch it this week, but I'll try and.
Another question, who owns the adjacent property?
The neck, I think Tim Gaban owns everything down there.
He owns?
Except for the church. I believe so, I'm not a hundred percent.
Yeah, all of the GC-ten.
And my personal opinion, they know my feeling. I would, I would, I would move for this, I would push for zoning changes. Get fully compliant and have a restaurant. You're there.
Stick, I think we're gonna stick to the beer for now. We don't want to go down that road.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions for petitioners, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this matter? All right, then I'm gonna call you back up. If you have any rebuttal that you would like to address, you don't have to, but you can. You have seven minutes remaining of your time. But you also, you can speak or you can choose to remain silent.
This is Rory Marinka. Just the one clarification on the construction of the path. The, the October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one date is for all the site plan improvements. So that would include some additional pavement, restriping of the parking lot, parking lot end islands. It's significantly more than just, just the gravel path.
Commissioner Strike?
Specific to the bike, to the gravel, or specific to the walkway path. That was one of the concerns that was raised by one of our commissioners, John Spring. In fact, at one point, he was proposing that a transient plan or a number of cars. He, he was very, he was always after doing car studies and pedestrian studies. And we backed him off of that, I believe, during that last deal. But then that was one of the assistance in putting the walkway there. Because the concern was that the pedestrians and bicyclists would be driving up the driveway with trailers and cars and campers and so forth, competing for the same space. And even in your own website, you talk about the walking distance from Elieska. So from a health, from a safety standpoint, that's where this commission came from three-plus-four years ago, in two thousand and sixteen. To see that not in, concerning. Back to my original question. Would it be extreme hardship if we put, changed that date from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty? That it would have to be done by this fall?
Yes, because it involves all the site improvements.
Aren't the permits already in place?
The, all the, the updated, the updated site plan improvements, so increased paving, striping.
I'm not talking about the striping, I'm just talking about getting the walkway in.
I, I believe that, sorry to butt in, but I believe that the way that it is worded is not just in regards to the walking path. It's regarded, regarding, as page three says, all site improvements, not just the pathway site improvements. So as a question for Mr. McLaughlin, is that correct interpretation that number three, that date of October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one applies to all site improvements? And that that includes more than just the pathway?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not only making the improvements, but then calling for inspection and paying for an inspector to come out and verify that all the improvements have been made. It's, it's closing out the, the building permit.
And so as a follow-up, if we were to require two dates, one for the pathway, one for the site, they would provide additional expense for the applicant to make sure that both of those are completed, completed by the two separate dates? Is that correct?
You could try and bifurcate out, you know, require that, you know, some part of the site is developed before the other. But it does seem kind of, you know, over-complicating it.
Well, that, that, that inclusion in there was specifically made, excuse me, be recognized here.
Commissioner Strike?
That, that stipulation in two thousand and sixteen was specifically made for safety. And to see it then not bifurcated out and not able, you know, the confusion and so forth. This was a health and safety issue. And I remember John Spring sitting right down here, bringing this up.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Just a question for staff, and I guess in response to this inspection comment and changing the dates. I believe zoning stops inspecting per code at what date? Do you know?
It's in code, it's like September thirty-first or August thirty-first?
I think it's August thirty-first.
August thirty-first, because they, to inspect the landscaping and all that.
So if, and the municipality has extended it since we got a new director. But, you know, that would be one reason where they could complete them in October, but they can't get them inspected. They would then be out of compliance, so.
Do I still have the table here?
Commissioner Strike?
I, I guess I, I will back off on that, as long as I can hear a verbal from you guys, that you'll do your best.
Most definitely.
Pardon me?
As a former landscaper, I'll probably be the one doing it, and I'll shoot to get it done this summer.
Throw some beer out there, you'll probably get volunteers. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your time. Seeing no one else in the queue, what is the oil of the body? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, in the matter of case two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-one-two, the Girdwood Brewing Company petitioned for conditional use, Resolution two-zero-one-six-dash-zero-two-five for expanding the use or the, on the premise, I move to approve with the staff's recommendations as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I'm good.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion, considering that we have to make findings on the record? Commissioner Krishna?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for staff, which is that as an amendment to the previous conditional use permit in two thousand and sixteen, do the conditions that we're looking at on page, pages seven and eight of our packet, do they add on to the, the previous conditions passed in two thousand and sixteen? Or are any of them superseded?
So what you're approving is the, the drawing that you see tonight. And these conditions of approval cover what is before you. So what was approved in the past is sort of gone away and is replaced by this. And all the issues that matter are covered in these conditions of approval. That is to say, the, the applicant worked with us to develop a detailed site plan that conforms to Title twenty-one. And all the points that didn't comply with Title twenty-one or the conditional use standards are listed in the conditions of approval. And so those are the five points that the Traffic Department brought up.
Thank you then. Could I ask a little bit about the, the differences between the conditions of approval that we saw in two thousand and sixteen, the ones that we're seeing before us today? Could you, could you explain, you know, why some of this went away? Like I'm looking at, provide a multi-use pathway from the Elieska Highway to the sidewalk attached to the building, extend the sidewalk to meet all entrances around the building. Did those, were those removed because of lack of compliance with Title twenty-one?
Yes, yeah, they weren't shown in the original site plan. So we recommended to the commission that they become conditions of approval to change the site plan to do all of these things. And they, they did do those, and we stamped it approved.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yeah, I'll be voting in support of this. I appreciate Mr. Strike, however, though, I feel like he's come up with a, a good solution. However, in the, in the case in front of us in this conditional use revision, you know, there's a lot of positives. The letter from the owner, that they have local support. They have until October thirty, twenty-twenty-one to finish it. I think they should be given that still. And the other reason to support this is the Girdwood Reserve was really good. That's all I got.
I would like to add that it meets the approval criteria of twenty-one-dash-zero-three-dash-zero, dot zero-eight-zero-D. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan of the area. As far as it being a commercial purposes, I think we went specifically into whether or not this is a retail establishment or not. I think for the most part, it appears that the commission believes this is, the retail is an accessory use. Again, going to the zoning standards, I also believe that the site size, dimension, shape, location will not have any potential impact specifically because the expansion is internal to the building. We're not increasing the footprint of the building itself. We're just increasing the Girdwood Brewing's use within that building and taking out what outside users would have been using. For the same reasons, I don't believe it will alter the character of the surrounding area. I think the fact that community members have been supportive of this, and there have not been any negative comments from their abutting neighbor, who by all means potentially could be a very particular neighbor. The fact that the church has no problems with the brewery next door, I think speaks to this issue. And then, same thing as far as adverse impacts anticipated. It appears that they are trying to address those adverse impacts as far as installing a pathway, which would eliminate safely, eliminating those safety requirements that our previous commissioner had addressed and that Commissioner Strike addressed tonight. And I also believe that some of their site plan, as far as kind of creating a more comprehensive design, they're both looking to solve any issues that they've, that have arisen over the past few years, as well as looking forward to see even things that aren't allowable currently, but that could be, such as food trucks. It's good to see that they're being proactive to eliminate any of those items. I would also just like to thank staff for looking into the issues of the grading and drainage to make sure that those are being satisfied in the site plan, the completion of, the certificate of completion for all site improvements, and that those will be addressed. I also think that the October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one date gives the petitioner enough time to adequately get this, especially considering that, it is my knowledge that stuff is still backed up because of earthquake construction. And so giving them a little time to get this done will ensure that they have the time to address this and get it done appropriately. And so for those reasons, I'll be supporting this motion. Anyone else would like to speak on the record? Commissioner Anderson?
Great job, Commissioner Bailey. I'd just add that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to support the modification to the CUP. And there was no public comments against the proposal.
All right, then I'll call for a vote. And that motion passes. Thank you so much for your time. Seeing no items left for business, I predict that someone to the right of me will be poking the screen soon. Commissioner Strike, would you like to make a motion?
No, I'm good.
All right, then, I believe we can infer that it's a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Seeing no one opposed, we are adjourned.